And we wanted you all to see it today, to see what they looked at as to why we don't understand how this area can be considered a wilderness.
Perfect.
And so it's, uh, you wanna help, Stetson? Who did you present?
I, uh, I don't know how that shows.
He's the biggest one here.
There's a microphone over there, sir. Do you all need a mic? Want me to use my?
To record it.
Okay.
Just state, just state your name for the record and then.
Okay. I'm Stetson Elkins. My dad, Alden Elkins, is one of the allotment owners that's affected. So what we're gonna show you all is kinda what they're proposing and, and we're, we're against, you know? We're, we're gonna show you a lot of the evidence of why we don't think this stuff applies. So anyways, just like they're saying, we're gonna show you some of the infrastructure that should disqualify the proposed areas. Next, please, sir. This is, we'll, we'll start off here in the Dog Canyon allotment, which is Mr. A. Days. And it showed in these two grids right here is, is, this is their map of it. Yes, please. This is, this'll make more sense as we go along. This is showing the infrastructure that's within roads, pipelines, waterings. The, the reds represent the roads, blue pipelines. It's pretty much through the middle of the entire proposed area. Right here, we're gonna show, this is one of the roads and pipeline you can see going. Another example of some of the same. Yes, please. Sorry. Just same, same examples of what lies all through their, shouldn't, shouldn't allow for what they're, they're wanting. I mean, I, I would think it definitely kicks it out. This is a county road that's actually running right through the middle of their wilderness. That first map, it showed that there's two grids and they're meeting on this county road. I don't know how you can have a county road run right through the middle of your wilderness.
Do they have anything in their plan to reclaim any of this stuff or to try to bring it back to its natural state or anything? Do you know of in the forest plan? I wonder if they have anything like that in there, like?
That's something, what they're claiming that, that this is, they're.
Yeah, but I mean, as far as like the reclamation or, or to try to bring the, you know, to, do they have anything in their plan to go back out and pick up pipeline and stuff if they were to get this through?
They, they didn't say anything to us about that. They said no new infrastructure at all would be added, though they did, they did tell us that.
But you remember wildernesses are supposed to be landscaped, it's untouched by man.
Exactly.
You know, I mean.
Right. Well, and see, just like this, I mean, this is Otero County Road maintained by the County Road Department. There's also a fiber optic line runs right alongside that road right there, too, that PVT has.
You know what county road that was? Number one?
Uh, 152, I believe, but I'm not positive of that. It's chimney-like.
Yeah, it's just.
Road is what it is.
It's foolish to me, um, you know, I mean, it's, we all know it's more about control than it is wilderness landscape, you know?
Correct. This is another example of county road that's running through it. Go ahead.
Is that a tower in the top of that picture up there? Can you back up one mic?
Yeah, some kind.
Yeah, power line and some of that, some of the power line, actually, we've got some more examples through Mr. Katie's allotment. There's quite a bit of the power line runs through it. So that's what, that, that's some of, the fiber optic line that PVT has that runs alongside the road. And then there's also some of Otero County Electric's power lines that are in, within also. There's examples of, yeah, here's some of the.
That's always good to have in your wilderness fiber optics.
Yeah, and you have good internet and electricity while you're going.
Bad internet connection in our wilderness.
Keep going. This is just examples of all this that we're wanting to show. Okay, this is water improvements that are located within. We have wells, troughs, dirt tanks. All those things will take, will need wheeled equipment. That's how a lot of this stuff was put in through equip contracts, federal, federal dollars spent to put in this good infrastructure. We wanna maintain it. We wanna, we wanna add to it. It just helps, you know? This is an example of wells. This is another well on property with the power line that's coming to it there, yep. That well is right on the border. It's actually not within, but it's just a stone's throw. That other power line across the road is within the wilderness designated area. These real big storage tanks are throughout the allotment, you know, I mean, they're thirty feet high, the old pipelines that lie to them. It's just, there's a whole lot of infrastructure, the dirt tanks that are all dug, you know, and you gotta keep bulldozers to keep them clean and keep them working. Some more dirt tanks. Just more examples of the infrastructure that's there. Let's just picture what, what, what you'll need, you know, to, to maintain a lot of that. Yeah, sorry.
Great, great, great power.
Water troughs. Go ahead. Just, just as kinda as quick as you go, I'll just explain what's there. More, more infrastructure. So this is in Mr. A. Days allotment. This is a test well that Yates Petroleum drilled in the seventies. Um, there's two of these that are inside their wilderness proposed areas, this one and then one of my dad's. And, I mean, it's, we had a heck of a good summer. There's a lot of grass, you know, you can't tell, but you can kinda see that that was all leveled off. That to this site, there is a, a road, was a raised bed road, gravel road about a mile up to this site. And then that, that's was all pushed out, you know, with the dozer back in the seventies when they, when they drilled that. This is just more examples of the casing that's there, you know, and, okay. And now we'll move to my dad's allotment there, the Quavo Canyon. We'll show you, it's gonna be basically some of the same. My dad's is more over here on the south and east side of, of what they're proposing. This is, in the orange is what it affects of his allotment. These are the access roads and pipelines that are within the proposed areas there. There's examples of them. More of the same, I just, we just wanted to show.
A lot of that surface pipeline, there's some buried pipelines, we have all of that, too.
Right. I, we may have a picture or two of the buried. This, this is the county road that threw my dad's park. This same, same county road, just kinda on the further north end of it there. Same road there, just another example of, I mean, it looks like you can see plenty of human evidence. There's another fiber optic sign that's within. This is gonna show you the water infrastructure, the storage tanks and, and like I say, a lot of this was put in with equip money, you know, so, I mean, it doesn't, doesn't make any sense to.
Isn't, isn't there a current equip contract, new contracts?
Correct. My dad has one right now. It, it's not on any of this, 'cause he had already done some of this, but yes, he does have some that, that does apply. That, that last picture, it's all right. You don't need to go back to it, but that was at that, that's also at the site where the other old well was drilled by Yates. Just more, yeah, you can go ahead. Dirt, dirt tanks that are throughout. That one isn't needing to be cleaned out there, just, we thought we'd show that one is, it needs, we need to be able to use our dozers and big wheeled equipment, as they call it, to be able to maintain. This is that road fence that's all within. Of that gas well site, yes.
I'm presuming the white is deeded?
Correct. The white is.
So what are they, what are they offering you on that?
The, it's cut out. It, we drew, we had to draw this in, my sister did all this, and we had to draw it in by hand to do this. So the deeded, it actually should run around the edge of the deeded.
So it's stair-stepped out.
Correct. It is stair-stepped out. I'm sorry, we, I should've pointed that out on, I think this is the only one that we did that on. Maybe a little bit of Cooper's, we might have to look at that on their map in a minute. You can see that gravel that was there, that's some of that raised bed road that they hauled all that in, in the seventies, you know, that's just more pictures. It's a culvert there crossing, going to that old well site that they put in on that road. This is the Mule Canyon In allotment. This is Cooper's. I may have Punk, he can come and, he can explain a bunch of this, maybe better what's coming on, on theirs. He's more familiar.
Punk Cooper and I'm part of Cooper Brothers Livestock has this allotment and other properties in both Chavis, Lincoln and Otero counties. Everything that I tell you about this, it, any change affects all of the other, rest of the operation. It all operates together as one business. So it's kinda like dominoes falling when you have one piece that you lose or lose effectiveness production off of. To any degree, it affects all the rest. So it's quite a bit at risk here. This particular allotment, well, let me go back one step. You guys are, you asked about the management, proposed management plan. I'm assuming you got copies of it, about three inches thick and painful to read.
Looks like an attorney's been there.
Yeah, well, this is, all of this is kinda buried in the middle of that. And they use terms, nebulous terms like exhibits wilderness characteristics and so on. They don't have any quantifiable assessment other than their maps and their pictures and stuff. So from that standpoint, what we're showing you are largely things that they don't have on the map they're using, but they do have allotment management maps in the local office that have all of this infrastructure on them. So they did, they should've had access to it all.
But we brought it all to their attention when we showed them this.
This particular allotment is entirely in Chavis County. Well, the whole allotment's not. All the rest of the dark green up there is the rest of the allotment. The part that's proposed as a wilderness is in Chavis County, or most of it there. The, the vertical county line is the orange part going north and south on that particular map, not that one, the other side, right there. That's the county line, okay? Everything to the east of it is Otero and everything to the west is Chavis. The red indicates roads. They are using a, a county road as one boundary, as the eastern boundary of this particular piece of proposed wilderness. It is serviced by three different wells. Two of them are just outside of the property boundary, but with large pipelines into the, into the forest, as a lot of the country is. And then one very large well in the center of it with all of the pipelines you see there off of it. That particular well has four different large storages on it and brand-new solar pumping It's got six, I think, six or seven drinkers watering troughs servicing, you know, both livestock and wildlife in that entire area. And so the two wells outside and the pipelines that run into the, into the forest area are critical to the management of that. The roads to them are critical and the, the solar stuff, the solar equipment that we just put in, we actually had to put it in by using a skid steer to get it in there because of the, it has a road to it, but the equipment those guys had to set up their solar panels and racks and stuff was too big to go up that road, okay? And it, and it's kinda overgrown with trees and places and such, so that's how that was put in there. It's to restrict, and the restrictive nature of this wilderness proposal stuff would probably mean that future maintenance, maintenance of that particular item would be out because they're not gonna let you walk a dozer or a cat back in there, not without a lot of loops to go through. So it, it, and when you're running livestock and a, and a particular piece of infrastructure goes down, you don't really have a lot of trigger time to get it fixed. You can't go through the month or two-month process of getting a permit to go in there to do something. That's the other aspect here that we're kinda concerned, awfully concerned about. Let's see. The, the pipelines that are in there, a lot of them, as have been mentioned, were put in with equip money, okay? In most of the cases here, well, in the case of all of our wells, they were all drilled, some of them years ago, but all with private money. Forest Service did not drill a one of those. And, and I don't believe, in our case, the newest pipeline was not put in with equip money. So there's not a pending contract. But those areas that do have equip money going in there, you have a responsibility of, of maintenance for twenty years on them. You can't just put them in, collect your government check and then let them deteriorate. You have to maintain them. That is the case with some of this, but not all of it on our allotment. The, a lot of the pipelines these days, because it's more efficient and the stuff is, holds up better, it's high-density poly, it can be moved and put in place easier and quicker. So, and, but it's on top of the ground. It's real resistant to all kinds of other problems, but what it won't resist is a fire burning across there. So to reduce the ability to fight fire puts all that stuff, and the storage tanks, in our case, three of them are poly tanks as well. So, and, you know, they, the Forest Service, in the case of this allotment, claims that a lot of those roads aren't there because this allotment was one, the first allotment in Lincoln actually to get, to have gone along with a forest management plan, an allotment plan, and part of it was restricted use on the roads, restricted to maintenance and not, not public access supposedly, allegedly. And that was a long time ago. It was back when I was in high school. And from that time forward, the public has never ceased using the roads to any degree at all. Forest Service used personnel for a long time trying to keep it from, that's what a road looks like when you don't maintain it, by the way. The, the Forest Service tried to restrict the use of it from the public, the use of those roads and access to that area, but they were never able to actually physically do it. They took them off their maps and as far as they're concerned, some of these roads don't exist, but they're still there and they're still used by the public. That's a typical well in that area, storage tank. Another storage, and that is a trick tank, has a collection area up behind it. These are items, all items that, another one that's, that's in the forest, that would be within that area. These are items, all items that, another one that's, that's in the forest, that would be within that area. Solar panels and, all of these are things that we don't think really fit their description, their own description of wilderness characteristics. And those pins, or working pins that are right, literally on the edge of it. On our particular allotment, there's a very old mine. There's a couple of them actually. One of them's kind of an open pit mining and this one that was a tunnel downward. Just downhill from that one is a, the tailings of that mine are still pretty visible. That's a probably, maybe like nineteen hundreds. So human activity's been there for a long time. Tailings and stuff off the other mine. Okay, any questions on that one? Back to you.
Thank you, Doc. That was informative. Thank you.
We have a couple other allotments also that are affected here. One of, Mr. Katie's here today. He could answer anything. Bonnie Smith is not here. She couldn't, she has a hard time coming off the hill anymore with her age. But we'll show you some examples on their property too. This one is on hers, right? I believe on antelope. Well, actually, this is both of them. The orange takes in both of what is left. The yellow there is just kind of drawn in how the power line is. There's pipelines that are there on the shaded area and roads. You can keep going. Again, that's some of the line running right across to you there.
Go back to that picture, if you don't mind. I'm Ken Katie. That blue tank there and the light green tank, that actually, that tank that's green there feeds another seven miles of forest that's across the highway. Tremendous infrastructure set up there. Most of this is buried, three foot deep or so. And there's hundreds of thousands of dollars invested here. And there was a, there is an equip on, on this one that's about finished up. But the, the big thing here is, you know, this is, I'm an engineer by trade and one of the things I, you know, I've got lots of guys that work for me. And this, this, what's already been demonstrated here is this has not been vetted properly. They have not went out in the field and they have not checked any of these, these proposals. So it needs to be rejected on, on face value until they get out there and they do all of this work. And that includes all of the others because there's, there's a great deal of infrastructure. And I'm going to tell you a story I told earlier today. My home is in Jackson, Wyoming. I've been around wilderness for over thirty years. And I'm a pilot and some other things. And I shared a hangar with Harrison Ford. Harrison had a helicopter about twenty years ago. And to show you how much trouble wilderness does for law enforcement and everything, a young man got seriously injured in the wilderness. They couldn't get him out. And they asked Harrison to bring his heli, his helicopter in to pick him up. And when they did, when he set the rail down, the Forest Service served him with a substantial fine for putting a rail down to pick that young man up in the wilderness. The sheriff paid the fine. But you were, basically, you were giving up all rights to save people's lives, to stop forest fighters, to do any of this stuff in any of these areas. And so you really have to step back and say, what are you willing to sacrifice here for whatever they're doing here? It just, you know, I've tried to talk to these guys and I'm trying to be nice to them. But in the end, you're going, the, the people of Otero, Chavis, Lincoln, all these people that come in there, they are forfeiting their right for safety. And are you willing to do that? And so I can go all through the rest of this. There's, you're not going to move the power lines. They're not going to do it. You know, you're not going to move these three foot deep water lines. You're not going to, to move these tanks. And the worst part about this that isn't pointed out is if, if it turns into wilderness, this is what happened in Wyoming. People took the cows off. You're going to turn off all the water and you're going to destroy the habitat because there's no water going to the forest. There is no open springs. So the hunting goes down a tube, everything goes down a tube. And you have to decide, you know, in Otero, what do you guys want to sacrifice for some silly plan? So if I were sitting in your shoes, I would call them up and say, this is rejected until you fully vet every one of these proposals. And we don't want to find that you missed a pipeline, or you missed a road, or you missed something else. Because it's their responsibility, not yours, not ours. And that's, that's the evidence they have in front of you right now.
Absolutely, and I agree with, with everything that you just said. Whenever y'all went to the Forest Service and presented this to Travis Mosley and the Forest Service, what kind of a response did you get from the Forest Service whenever these, these were pointed out to Travis? And Travis has seen this PowerPoint, correct?
Correct.
And so did he acknowledge the fact that this just doesn't meet the wilderness criteria? Did he verbally communicate that or was he?
He said they'll have to look at it.
They'll have to look at it?
Yeah.
They need to look at it more than just this right here?
Right.
Well, I don't, I don't see what more, you know, I mean, we can, what more there is to look at.
Right.
We know that this doesn't meet wilderness criteria, but as far as the, the forest, the forest plan itself goes, when we had the, the Forest Service in our meeting, what, Pemell, probably a year and a half ago? Carol, maybe a year and a half ago, two years ago maybe, I don't know when it was. But they were working on this forest plan. And I told them at that time that I wanted county participation in the, in the, in the front end of this plan. I said, I don't want to just have the county acknowledge it the back end of it on the public comment part. And then they feel like they did their justice by allowing the county to give a couple comments and then they move forward. I told them, we need to have a representative at, on the very ground floor. And so here we are, or here I felt whenever they brought this in the other day, that they did exactly what I told them that I wasn't going to support. And that's on public record too. We can roll the tape back if we had to. So, yeah, I mean, I have, I, I have big problems with it. I had a conversation earlier with Roy Nichols, our county attorney here. It's in, and what Roy and I spoke about was the legality of this forest plan apart from an MOU with county, the county and the local governments. I would imagine that the only way this forest plan will be legal is if the, if our counties respond to this forest plan. Possibly through public comment, possibly through an MOU, whatever. But I feel like my way, my, my position on this would be right now, without really being educated, if it's a plan that we can do. But I would just say that we reject this forest plan. We say that we as a county body don't agree with this forest plan. We feel like it's going to be detrimental to the health, safety and well-being of the people that have elected us in the office. Our oath bounds us to that. We don't, we reject it. And if the Forest Service wants to go around the county and try to implement this illegal forest plan, then we will sue them from the county platform and we'll sue them to keep them from putting it in place. But I, the, the forest was probably personally the biggest driver of me getting involved in politics. My family got put out by the Forest Service about twenty-five years ago through the Mexican spotted owl with the timber industry. And now with our forest allotment, my dad, that my dad manages in Katrin County, we're dealing with the reintroduction of the Mexican gray wolf and the same illegal Forest Service in Katrin County that's in Otero County. And I feel like this is a hill to die on. And I feel like that each one of us ought to prepare for that, not physically, but, but just to take that kind of stand to say, no more, we've had enough. We've got it. It's, it's all got to boil down to the point where we say, no more. What that looks like, I don't know. I'm sure our sheriff, our great sheriff, David Black from here in Otero County, would be standing here with the same like mind as probably everyone of us sitting here too. Because I think David, as well as the rest of our county sheriffs, are sick of the overreaches of our federal government. So whatever the fight is going to look like, I think we just need to be prepared for it and not, and not give up.
RB, what is, as far as Otero County, what can we throw at the Forest Service to make them, that would get their attention to halt this? What, what can we draft up or do to make, or is it, we just throw in paper and money and win?
Probably just a resolution through the board, couldn't we, that we just reject this proposal as a commission board and then view?
I would like to have something more astounding than a resolution.
Otero County's the Forest Service is, has the legal authority to make the decisions or go forward, do whatever they're doing with their plan. Our options are to comment publicly and say that we disagree with it, pass a resolution. We need to get designated as cooperating agency so that we're involved in this process sooner. It sounds like we asked for that and it was asked a year ago, it was asked a few weeks ago and that's still not happening. That's a problem. That needs to be noted in the comments next week. I have to draft up those comments and we'll have to have another meeting to adopt those so that we will get the comments in. But as far as their deadline, as it stands right now, it could pick where we're at. That's where I, it appears, looking back at history, we tried to sue the Forest Service before to, to stop what we view as, as illegal approachment, preventing the county from protecting itself with forest fires. Unfortunately, we're not successful. The courts aren't seeing it that way. So it's an ongoing battle. We explore those avenues and keep them open. Eventually, that's the way to go, try it. At the end of the day, maybe wasted money and resources, that's pretty good.
Connects both highways. Well, actually, not both highways. From Highway twenty-four on the east end by Duncan, you can come out. Runs through Chavis County and then through Otero, all the way back out and comes out between Pinon and Weed, right there, Davis.
So would that be a emergency access for emergency vehicles to, I'm taking there's residents that live down that road?
Correct, yeah, there is. They, they're, they're not, when, when we kind of asked about that, they're saying there are two polygons meet on the county road. So they're not counting. The road is running through their wilderness, but it's there, it's established. I, I don't, I don't really get their reasoning. I mean, on their map, they can just show that it meets there and, and they're not, the best that I can understand from them, they're not saying that you won't be able to use the county road or anything. But as soon as you step off ten feet over here, you're on wilderness, same way, as soon as you're out of the right of way of the road.
I, I think the best way to approach this is not to try to find points of argument inside of the forest plan to say, well, you know, this is an emergency road or well, you know, this, it's just, I think the, the better standing or the stronger argument is just the fact that it's going to destroy the, the, the very last remaining few industries that we still have in our rural America. And that's our cattle ranchers, that's our livestock producers. So it's not a matter, it's a matter of an oath. To me, it's a matter of my oath. My oath to my office is not to the state of New Mexico and dang sure not to the Forest Service. My oath is to the people that have elected me and I, they've entrusted me with this office to protect their, their, their safety, their health, their well-being. Everything that this forest plan is going to negatively impact, so.
Well, one thing, we're not necess, we're not against the forest plan as a whole. We're against the, will, that, that they're proposing this as wilderness, as lands with wilderness characteristics. We don't feel that it is. There's too much infrastructure, there's been too much touched by the hand of men, you know, that's all the way from back to the mines.
Corey just mentioned to our bankers that, that some of this may fall under the values of ability to borrow.
Absolutely, it does. Sure it does.
Right, there's, there's a lot of implications.
Well, and it's just, the unfortunate thing is, is it's, it's bigger than this forest plan. It's just a battle, the political battle that we're in today, and it's a battle of control and power. And that's what this, that's what this thirty thirty deal is. And you know, it's just about the government getting more control and more power over the land. Because as they control the land, they control the people because they control our access to the natural resources which sustain our homes. And it's, it's a big, it's, I think it's much bigger. But, but I, I, I'm ready to fight the fight. And I'll take the lead too. You might be more productive just, I mean, maybe it's, maybe it's more productive instead of rejecting the whole forest plan, which is what I want to do. Maybe it's more productive to just try to fight the deal on the, on the wilderness part of the plan. I don't know. You know, I mean, yeah. I just know that we're getting starved out. We're getting starved out in our, in our rural areas. And the way they're doing it is they're restricting the industries that have always sustained us, if it be logging, mining, oil and gas. And, and if we let them keep doing it, we're all going to wind up, you know, having to sell out, move to town, you know? I mean, what else is there to do for some guy that loses his permit, you know? So I'm willing to engage in the fight, there in this battle or the battle for representation, as we should call it. Because you know, our, our forest shouldn't be dictated up underneath the federal agencies anyways. Our forest should be managed through county, local governments, you know? We should have the say on how our lands are utilized and what we would consider a wilderness area, you know, but.
Maybe we could let Chavis County talk. I know they've had to go through this with the BLM.
Absolutely.
Same type thing and maybe they'd have.
Would love, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we'd love, love y'all too.
I got one more question, Jim, real quick before. All the infrastructure that's on there, the power, the tanks, the water lines, are they going to require you to remove all that? Or you can't leave it there and leave it functional because if it, power line goes down and they have to replace or a pole breaks?
They didn't touch much, they didn't touch much on like the utilities part of it because they, I think it surprised them that even any of it did go through. I, I don't think that it showed in their maps that they were. So I, I think they would still allow that to happen, but that seems kind of like they're cherry picking there, you know, that we would still maintain our power lines, you know, but we're not allowed to.
Is there two different types of wilderness?
There's not, no, but that's, yeah.
Okay, because you take White Mountain Wilderness, there's, you know, how many hundreds of homes got burned up? Because they wouldn't let them put a dozer on to fight that fire.
We used that example of the fire, yes or no, too, when we, when we talked last time, actually, he was right. So, no, that, and that, that's what we're concerned about. And, and the same thing. The fire potential, it'll go up tremendously when this happens, you know? And there's a lot of private landlords just on the east and BLM, it's going to affect all those guys too, you know? Because the fire will be going, going big time by the time it gets to them, you know, so. Yeah, no, you just, you won't, you'll be able to maintain what's there, if it is declared wilderness. It takes a congressional act to become wilderness, true wilderness designation. That, what they're wanting to designate as lands with wilderness characteristics. And then it's just one step away. from being proposed wilderness. We don't even want it to get to that point because with the administration that's there, I mean, you know, it, we, we just don't want it to be, we don't feel like it could be any, it's not beneficial to the forest at all. It's better taking care of the way it is and.
A lot of it's gonna have to start in Washington and I, and I see you have a letter from Yvette up there. Is she on the, on the fight for, on the DC side up there trying to?
Yes, she's been, they've been in touch with us kinda the whole way through this since we've been working on it, yes.
Sounds like the same people that got us out of Afghanistan or managing our forest, the shit show, to put it mildly.
Well, that's the end of our, some of the presentation, you know, I mean, it just, we feel like there's enough stuff just in what we showed them. We've invited them to come out and look. We'll take them around, you know, and show them all this too. But we just feel like there's more than enough evidence that it doesn't, that doesn't meet their characteristics.
I have a question. Last time we brought up the fact that you've already, my name's Joe Adie and you guys, we had talked about that you already have an ordinance in place in two thousand fourteen that addresses wilderness. Why doesn't that have the teeth to do something that another ordinance? I don't understand.
It's a good legal question. I tell you, I mean, it's gotta, we, we gotta, we gotta build an alliance and, you know, I mean, and with the Chavas, with Chavas County. You know, the more, more we stand together and the more counties stand together and the more we push back. I mean, I, I think ordinances and resolutions and such only have the strength that we give them, you know? If we just pass them and then forget about them, we'll forget about it. But if we stand on them and we say, "No, we're not gonna do this because we have already got a resolution in place and you will respect our resolution," then, I mean, we gotta, we, it's either fight them or give up and let them destroy us, you know? I mean, I don't know. I guess we can sit back and go, "Well, the federal government says this and it's the federal mandates this and the federal law this" and forget about it. It's gotta finally come to a place where you say, "This isn't the way our founding fathers intended our government to work. We're supposed to be a government for the people, by the people, not for the government, by the government." So, the, the people's voice is best represented in our local governments. It's our village, our city and our county commission boards. And so, I think we have great legal standing and I think we have great power. I think we've just been reduced because we always sit back and go, "Well, we gotta follow this." We've always done it that way. We've always had to follow federal law, but, you know? I just, I think we have a constitution that we can get a hold of and stand on and I think that we can fight them back on it, hopefully. I mean, that's, that's my heart in it, my direction, not trying to find a, 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 you know, loophole out and then just get in a bigger pickle. I just think we just gotta push them back.
Mr. Adie, I'm sure through all of this, you've already have legal counsel?
No, we've held off.
You, you don't have, I was hoping you did where your legal counsel could, we could try to put the minds together and figure our strongest power of fight.
We can put legal counsel together, but it seems clear to me that the ordinance has teeth in it. It seems clear to me that y'all have the power to stop this.
We do.
And I don't, I'm, we'll do whatever it takes, cause we're not, we're gonna down the hill too. But the further this goes, the further it's gonna go past us. It's gonna go way beyond us. We're just the first test.
Yeah.
That's all we are.
And I think the legal end of it, we can handle the legal end of it, the county can. I mean, that's why we're here. We're here to defend and protect y'all, you know, I mean, so, um, yeah.
So, from Chavas County's side, how, have you, on your legal side of it or through your?
Y'all come on up. Man, we appreciate you, appreciate you coming in today.
What's Chavas County's stand on this?
We, we owe you a trip now, since y'all came on. We'll, we'll, we'll travel next time. We appreciate you coming though. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Bill Williams. I'm the Chavas County Manager. Uh, I live in Roswell, New Mexico, of course, Chavas County. Thank you guys for letting us come over and visit.
Absolutely.
Uh, we've had a lot of, uh, people reach out to us because this does affect Chavas County, it affects Otero County, it affects Lincoln County and it affects, which one am I missing?
Eddie.
Eddie County. And so, you're, you're absolutely right. I believe Commissioner Griffin that we all need to come together as one voice strongly and, and do something about it. We are very fortunate that we've been working for several years fighting the BLM, as was mentioned earlier, on a variety of other manners or, or other problems. And, uh, we have a comprehensive management plan that spells out exactly how we believe the lands should be managed within Chavas County. It sounds if you guys have an ordinance and resolutions, which also will be, uh, good tools that will work to help spell out what our, um, expectations of the government are. And the government has a requirement to include local governments. And just as you said, it's not at the end of the process during the comment period. It's, it's throughout the process. We should be at the table from the very beginning and not the same status as just the general public. We are the government that represents the general public. And I would like to introduce, of course, Jeff Bilbury. I believe everyone knows Commissioner Bilbury.
Absolutely.
Uh, he's, he has a whole lot more intelligence about this than I do. And the, the shining star in our court today is Margaret Byfield. She, uh, came over from Austin. She represents us on a variety of matters and has helped us throughout all these processes. And, and I believe she has probably more input than any of us would have on, on how to fight this and how to actually accomplish something. So, I'm gonna defer to these people.
Go ahead, Margaret. I forgot how much mine.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, thank you. I was gonna say gentlemen, and, and I really appreciate you. I think first off, it's, it's very, it's very good that you held this hearing because one of the things that has to get out there is what is really happening on the ground and that, you know, giving them a voice, I think is really important. So, just by way of background, I grew up on a ranch in Nevada, um, and I don't know if you guys remember a case called Page versus United States years ago, it's now kind of history, but I, I grew up in the fight. We filed the first federal land raising takens case against the federal government for the taking of our ranch. So, coming from that perspective, I, I come from ranch, ranching roots, but I've spent the next, the la- the last thirty years fighting these property rights issues. So, I run a group called American Stewards of Liberty and we've been spearheading a lot of the information on thirty by thirty this year. So, we've worked with Chavas County for a, a long time. I'm thinking Greg Nybert, Doon Stage West Lizard, I think is when we started working with, uh, the county. And they've done a really good job. They have some really good pieces in place, which is the comprehensive plan, which really spells out their position on, okay, which spells out their position on, you know, all of these issues, these federal issues that impact the counties and your ability to protect the health, safety, welfare of the people. They have good language in there on wilderness and what is the requirement in there, what the agencies need to do as they go through their inventory process and through the process of designating wilderness. I think in, in looking at this issue, you guys have a number of ways that you can fight this. Your attorney is correct. I, from my perspective, I don't think the ordinance by itself is what you wanna stand and fight on because local law does not supersede federal law. That's just, that's just how the courts have ruled. That's where we are. That's how it is. But the element that, um, that is, misses in that debate is the coordination element. And I don't know if you guys are familiar with the coordination process, but this is something that Chavas County has used pretty effectively. Sometimes if you're, unless you're willing to go all the way to court, sometimes you don't, you don't win the battle like you really want to. But you can certainly force the agencies to go back and redo their plan, a, a number of different things that they will have to do because they failed to coordinate. Now, the coordination language, which requires them to work with you guys, consider your plans and policies through their planning process, early in the process, is in the federal law. So it's not supremacy. In other words, the law that tells them they have to do this forest plan also says they have to do that in coordination with the local governments. So that's the federal law. So it's not local government saying, "Hey, you have to coordinate with us." It's, it's the federal government telling them, "You have to do this coordination." So what is this coordination? It's different than cooperation. What, um, the agencies love the cooperative agency process. If you go to them and you say, "Hey, we wanna coordinate instead," they'll say, "We've got this great cooperative agency process. We'd love for you to participate in" because they completely control that. The only thing that happens in the cooperative agency process is you are helping them prepare the plan. That's all you're doing. The cooperative agency process is a process to have agencies work together to do the environmental impact analysis in order to determine which alternative is gonna go forward, which one of the, of these plans. And it happens through, under NEPA, the National Environmental Policy Act. So, cooperation agency starts when NEPA starts and ends when NEPA starts, when NEPA ends. Coordination is, covers everything that the Forest Service does. There is no beginning or ending to it. If they are coordinating with you, they're having regular meetings with you, you're never surprised by their actions because you're continually talking about the policies that local governments need and how those are going to be consistent with the federal position. Now, you know, this is something, this is not an easy process. First off, there's, there's a lot of work that goes into this. You, you end up, you know, having to fight off a lot of resistance by the agency says they do not want to do this. And so what you really have to stand on is you have to understand the law requires it. So how you go about implementing it is you have to be pretty smart. You know, this is not a shoot from your hip approach. This is very strategic. And so just in the conversation, you know, on this issue, you have a number of things that I think are, are very beneficial. I don't know what your ordinance says, but, um, they are required to coordinate and work to make their plans consistent with your plans. So if your ordinance spells out, wilderness ordinance spells out certain items that the county has to have in order to say, uh, protect the people from wildfires or specific things in it like that, those are specific issues they have to coordinate with you on and, and the issue becomes, can they resolve that conflict? Can they become consistent with your policy? Now, they don't have to become consistent with your policy, understand that, but they have to explain why they can't. So this is why I say it is very, very strategic and you wanna be very smart about how you put your arguments for, forward because you wanna make sure your position is always supported with the reason why you must have this. Because that's what they have to explain why it's not in their plan, why they're not changing their position is because they can't meet that requirement. So it is pretty, and I'm kinda getting in the weeds and probably a little bit too deep in the weeds for everybody here right now.
No, it's good though.
But, um, so kind of to get back to more of a high level approach on this, you, you have some really good tools. I know, um, Chavas County has a great plan. They have good language in there on wilderness, which we were going through yesterday, which the agencies have not even attempted to, uh, work with them on. So they're in a very good position right now to send a letter to the Forest Service and make a very specific request under NEPA. In other words, we, they have to follow the federal laws. That's the process. So what you do in coordination is you utilize that. They have to follow that process. So under NEPA, one of the things that they are supposed to do is if they haven't considered all the information, if they've missed a big piece of the information, then they have to go back and do what's called a supplemental environmental impact statement. Now, because they failed to coordinate, and I know Chavas County's position is very strong. They have a good plan. It's been there since, I mean, the update was done in twenty sixteen, yeah. So, all of this is laid out. So they're in a really good position right now to re, to, uh, notice the Forest Service that they need to do a supplemental EIS. And what that's gonna do is the Forest Service is gonna have to figure out, "Well, do we have to do that or don't we have to do that?" That's gonna take a little bit of time. Um, in the meantime, I, I think what you guys are talking about doing is, is a coordination meeting, getting them to the table. Um, the importance of the coordination meeting is that it's on the record. So you have the Forest Service sitting here answering your questions and all of that is on the record. And that goes to support what you put in the record, um, down the road. So, or, or through, through the, their process. You show how you raise these issues, they've ignored these issues, they've ignored all of the infrastructure in the proposed wilderness area. You get all that on the record. It's not, it's not a conversation in a coffee shop anymore. This is accountable. This is a, a county business meeting. So it's on the record and becomes a part of that record that it, when you do get into court, that's where it becomes very useful. So, I think, you know, kind of to sum it up, where you guys are right now from my perspective is, um, I think the counties working together would be very, very good.
Absolutely.
You know, I think a joint coordination meeting may be very, very successful and, um, between the counties. And especially since you guys have been through it many times and kinda know the drill. And, um, we lay out all of these issues. We come in prepared with this information on the wilderness. We get there, we know what they're gonna say. We're not gonna get any different answers than what you guys already have from them. The difference is it's gonna be on the record.
Yeah.
And that just positions you, continues to position you, so you guys are in a fighting position. So if you do have to pull the trigger and go to court, you're in the best, your arguments are set. You're in the, they, they've been smartly put together. There, there are issues you can defend and win on. And then you, you go to court on that.
Fantastic information. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, do y'all have a public land council in Otero County? Y'all have one?
Yes, yes.
You, yeah, for that.
Are they involved, are they involved in any of this? Has anybody brought in this before?
I don't think so.
Things like this come before ours.
Right, yeah. And I'll be sending all this information to our public lands.
Right.
Council, whatever, gave us their name a couple of years ago. I'm not sure if it's.
They particularly asked to be involved in it. I got the calls of some of those, watched that last meeting from, uh, internet and they, and they called me after that meeting and said, "We would like to be involved."
And, and that personally, I think it's a pretty powerful tool to have.
Sure.
Because you have more people.
More agents.
At the seat. You know, and they're gonna, they're gonna be a, a group of your peers that are here, that live, live in the county, so.
Well, I, I, I'm very appreciative to the work that y'all have already done there in Chavas County and the, and the approach that you have towards this and, I mean, um, we don't wanna sit back and try to reinvent the wheel and reinvent our own, our own plan. It would be bad, we'd be much better suited just to, I think, you know, if y'all are comfortable with, than just to join in, you know, join in the fight. How, if that's, if that's better in an alliance or if it's better just to have the same, same, same fight here?
Would a bigger group be more powerful than two individuals?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, personally, I think.
And, and as, as Ms. Byfield said, we all need to enhance our, our weapons that we have to fight back with. And so, like I say, we're, we're in a pretty good position. We have identified some areas that we need to strengthen in our plans. We've already written a letter, uh, we're hoping to deliver it to the Forest Service today, basically a cure notice. We need you to come to the table with us because you've broken the law. And, and we are giving you some options on how you're gonna fix that up. We have a resolution that we're going to present next week so that it becomes public that we are opposed, uh, to what's going on now and, and the potential to move forward with it, so.
So the other, Lincoln and, and Eddie County, are they, are they with y'all?
We've not, we've not spoken with them yet.
I'm sure Eddie County will be. I mean, uh, those guys, I, I talked to and Lincoln will too, I'm sure.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure they will.
Because if we could get four counties to come together and with the power of them.
I mean, we, we literally just found out about this. We didn't know this was ongoing. We've been fighting a fight on the Carlsbad Resource Management Plan that had those same areas listed as, uh, lands with wilderness characteristics and we've been staving them up and, and trying to make sure that we have a seat at the table. In the meantime, Forest Service was doing their thing behind the scenes. If it hadn't been for the calls from, uh, Mr. Lykins, Mr. K- If it hadn't been for the calls from, uh, Mr. Lykins, Mr. Cooper, Mr. Aday, you know, we, we had some people that really brought us up to speed quickly. I sent an email to the Forest Service and they said, oh, tell you what we'll do. We're going to do you a solid. We're going to get you to the fifteenth of December to make comments on the plan. What? We, we're just now finding out about it. In our county, you're doing these things without any, uh, prior notice, without any coordination and.
We just got handed these this morning.
I, I got mine the day before you asked me to do it in the mail.
The BLM, I, I asked them about, three weeks ago about it and, and they were like, what are you talking about?
Even later.
So they're not even aware of it?
Oh, they're aware of it.
They are, but they don't want it.
It's just, it's just a total lack of respect. And that's not to take a shot at any individuals that are working for the Forest Service. It's just to take a shot at the agency in general because they just need to be more open and have more communication with local, and have respect, you know, the local governments to, yeah.
I want to applaud these gentlemen for putting that PowerPoint together.
Absolutely, that was great.
There's so much information there that can't be denied.
That was a good PowerPoint, absolutely.
They call wilderness like characteristics and what the, it all has to go by. You can't just turn your back on paved highway and look to the south and say, that's wilderness, you know?
Can I also make one more suggestion? I completely understand the perspective of not, of not even wanting to mess with the comments because, you know, we all know those go to this black hole.
Oh, yeah.
And we put a lot of work into them that they don't even take them into account. But there is a purpose for those comments that benefits you. And that is, if you do decide to sue on this for whatever reason down the road, that preserves your standing. So usually what, in other words, what the courts, what they're looking at is they don't think that somebody should come in at the tenth hour and complain about something when they weren't even involved in the process and didn't try to help fix it. So that's, that's really the purpose for it. It doesn't have to be substantive, doesn't have to be really deep. You want it to be, you know, you want your issues in the record. In other words, when you go through the administrative process, you can only, um, you can only take up those issues that have been presented through that process. Doesn't have to be necessarily by you, but it has to be by somebody. But you want to preserve your standing. So one of the things that we typically recommend to counties that they do is you do a letter that identifies the inconsistencies between your plan and their plan and how they didn't take them into account. Instead of doing a line by line, well, this A should be an of, or, you know, that, that kind of stuff. Don't get into that. Just, uh, hold, just set your position on how the county's, the county's needs and purposes and priorities were not taken into account in this draft, draft plan. And here's how they are, how they conflict with our position. Your decision to create LWCs conflicts with our ability to be able to, uh, help fight wildfires that spill out of the wilderness areas that they're trying to, you know, defend. All of these kind of issues are the things that you, that you put in there. So that would be my recommendation on, um, the commenting process. I completely understand it's a black hole. But you're not doing it because you're going to change their mind. You're doing it to make sure you guys have a place to stand and fight.
So it couldn't, it couldn't be argued as a point, though we, if we respond through public comment, it couldn't be, uh, argued from the point that we're recognizing this plan and almost like a cooperation type of it. It's not, it wouldn't be viewed in that way.
Now, but if you go into.
As long as it wasn't viewed.
If you go into cooperative agency, you are viewed as a preparer of that draft.
Yeah, I don't want to go into that.
Yeah. So that is a distinction.
Well, I'm definitely, um, you know, I mean, I, I feel like I've, you know, definitely expressed my position. Um, and, uh, and I'm, 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 I mean, I'm, I'll, I'll commit to however I can help support, um, the fact that we're all in.
Is it going to be okay for our attorney to give the old attorney and kind of see some of the, we'll, we'll try to do a resolution. I don't want a copy thing. I want something, but it all beats and says, get down to the same point.
Right.
Um, as to whatever y'all have got in place to where could, we're kind of getting in on the tail end of this, trying to get caught up with.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to just, for us, just to follow your lead. I mean, if a resolution's the best thing to do, then we can do that, or if it's whatever.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the, the reason we're doing the resolution is to bring the public up to speed. I mean, the resolution, I believe by itself, doesn't carry any real weight. You know, it's just, it's just our position as a county. So we're going to do that and we would encourage you to, to speak. Our, our attorney is our former county manager. Uh, we have him on a, on professional services contract. He's not really up to speed on this particular battle. He has fought the other battles, but, uh, the person that, that we utilize the most, of course, is, is Ms. Byfield. And, and we also have you on a, an agreement. So, uh, we, I know that there can be some.
Yeah, whatever we need to do on our end too, to make sure.
However you, however you guys work that out.
We have access to you and, and, and your counsel as well. I mean,
Okay.
You, uh, you're in the, you, you're knowledgeable in the fight and we can, you, you, yeah, you've got my confidence.
So you're an independent, like contractor or service provider to Chavis County?
Yeah, we have a professional service agreement with Chavis County, yes. Which is the reason they can call me Friday afternoon and say, can you be here?
Mr. Chairman, she, this is outside of the scope of our agreement, this, this particular meeting. I mean, it, it is and it isn't. I mean, it, it, it does concern all the things. But we were very specific in our contract, what we did, but yet Margaret, on more than one occasion, we've called her and said, we've got this issue and she comes over and, and takes care of it at no additional cost to us. And I, I publicly want to thank you for that. You've been really helpful to us and have, we've learned an awful lot from her.
Well, if you grew up on ranch in Nevada, you got to have a heart for it. I'm sure you got a little bit more at stake in it than just your career.
And once you, once you get to know about Margaret's and, and all that she does and, and her organization, you'll find out that, that it's not just Chavis County. She does a lot nationwide.
Yes, ma'am.
And so.
Could we get your information to?
Sure. Yeah, I'll, I'll leave you with the card. And I would say that when, probably one of the first things, you've looked at the ordinance, but, but one thing that, that you guys probably really want to look at is beefing up. You know, maybe get some policies put in place pretty quick, which that can be done by resolution that, so it's sufficient enough to have those discussions with the Forest Service on it, I think. But then ultimately, if you don't have a comprehensive plan, which really goes into these things, that would be, you do? Okay. So that would be the place to start, is just take a look at that, see what's in there and see if anything needs to be kind of beefed up there.
And as I stated, we've had a comprehensive management plan for several years. I updated it in twenty sixteen and yet we looked at it. And every time, they, they come from a little different direction. So, you know, there, there's no shame in knowing that we had to upgrade it, improve it somewhat.
You have to tweak things all the time.
Sure.
Moving, moving target all the time.
We do the same thing. We, yeah, we just, we updated our plan the last, yeah, twenty twenty.
Oh, good.
Yeah, so ours is, yeah, we.
Good, 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 good.
RB, do you have any questions for him or? Well, anybody else have anything they want to, we, we learned a lot.
Thank, thank you.
What a great start. Appreciate you so much coming down, really do. And, uh, yeah, I think that we're doing a great service to the people of Otero County and Chavis County. And I'm sure Eddie and Lincoln and the others will be ready to, ready to, to, to band together as well, I, I would think.
You would really think Lincoln County would because they're already eat up so much of, with the wilderness already. If they get hit again, they're going to lose, I mean, so much of their, their county, you know, property and stuff, so. What I'd like to really say right now is if we can get together, RB, and try to get some, get this thing going, it sounds like it's kind of an important, to me, kind of a upfront, get going thing on. If we can try to get some information and try to get something where we can put together as soon as we can a resolution, even if we need to have another special meeting to, to bring it in. Just something we can get going.
We'll, we'll need that special meeting, um, for, for the, the comments, Thursday, on the fifteenth, so.
We suggest a meeting on Monday. So if you need it, because they will be approved by you since you're all timing.
Monday, this coming Monday?
You need seventy-two hours notice to be up Monday night.
And then, um, with it being a resolution, I wonder if it would have stronger standing. I mean, we just call a public hearing like we did before in the.
You don't need a public hearing for a resolution.
Okay.
If the meeting's open to the public, so you can still let the public speak.
Whatever we need to do, just to give it the best strength, you know?
What is your available to be on Monday?
I can do Monday, never.
You do?
Yeah.
Do you do it in the morning or in the afternoon?
I'd rather do it in the morning, get it over with. I got the rest of the day.
On AM?
That's fine.
Yeah, I can do that one.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
Uh, we're just talking about, to be a point about the economic study of this, how it affects the tax base and, and, and what you're doing here in your county. And that's a pretty strong tool used, uh, with that.
Sure.
And we, we did bring that up, but it is, there is an economic impact to this for your county, so.
And I think, Mr. Chairman, that that, that that's my statute. They have to do that. And we haven't seen the findings of those. If you'll, if, you, you talk about the Mexicans spotted out, you want to see what it did to the economic stability of small communities. Closing schools, shutting down industry, affects the county. This is the last industry that's up there.
You're right.
And it's, it's important that, that they do this economic impact study. And we've been fighting this New Mexico jumping mouse, metal mouse for years. And that's, that's the one thing that we've been able to slow them down on. You know, they've been stealing our water. They've been doing things in the higher country. I always thought it would be some kind of a dry land lizard down here on these, but it would, it will. But Mr. Cooper was right when he said that they're after the bigger, they, they, they're getting, they're going after the biggest allotments first, the six biggest. Two of them being up there that we've been trying to hold off for years. But we got to, we've got to make them do this economic impact study.
And all the little guys, it's a shot over their bow because as soon as they got the big ones, they're coming after the little ones. They're not going to stop until they try to get everybody snuck down.
And the private land that's surrounded by those new wildernesses.
Well, thank God we live in a conservative area and conservative county and, you know, we have like-minded people. Wouldn't be the berries to be sitting with a bunch of radical environmentalists, you know?
So Gary, I don't know if you can, it'll be open to the public Monday, if you could be here at night. If there's anything we're going to get put on this and get, I don't know if it'd be worthwhile for you to show up or, but, I'm not a hundred percent sure what all they're going to put together quite yet or what we're going to have to.
Gerald, I'm, Mr. President, I mean, Mr. Chairman. I want to be wherever I can help the industry the most. I'm scheduled to be in Albuquerque at the, uh, at some meetings up there at the Joint Stockman. That doesn't mean that I have to be there. If I, I'm representing the industry. That's where my passion is. All producers across, across the state really, but, and if, if, if the county requests, I don't know if I can help or not, but I, I want to be at the place where I can help the most.
Will, will it benefit to have Gary here Monday morning on what we're going to?
Just stay engaged, Gary, and if so, we'll just call him.
Mr. Chairman, i- is there a, a sign in sheet or anything? Is there a way that you guys have been contacting all the different people who are involved in this so that we can make sure when we do something? I mean, of course, your emails would be easy to find, but, uh, other than Punkt, I'm not sure that I have any more, uh, from this group. Is there an existing list or could we ask that everyone put some kind of contact number or?
Yeah, I can, I can give you guys some people here, everybody write down their information and then I can send out one group.
Thank you.
And I guarantee, Gary, your, your good deeds don't go unnoticed either. You've been so involved with all this stuff for so long and I don't know where everybody would be without your leadership too, you know, you've been. Yeah, yeah. We appreciate you.
Yeah, are there any other comments, any other?
Just, I, I would, I would like to see, uh, I'm going to speak, the only other thing is I think we need to get the, Otero County grazing advisory board involved to some extent.
Well, I was hoping, well, I was hoping Bobby and them, some of them, through the association and, and, but, uh, I think they are. Beebo called me yesterday, wanted to know, he was telling me he couldn't make it. But he said, anything he can do, anything, tell him and he'll get on it. I know he does have a lot of contacts in a lot of places, but, uh, so just, yeah, group effort, let's get together and try to get something done.
And, uh, Judy Maderas, Holcomb Ranch, uh, these allotment owners presented about their, their allotments. But there's others, including ours, that will be affected by wilderness. And so it's a lot bigger than it may originally seem.
Yes, ma'am.
That's true. This is just alternative B. There's a lot more in alternative C if they decide to lay on over there.
That's right.
Yeah, there probably, yeah, I don't know how many more are on, allotment owners. All mine is then within this correct and, yeah, I, I don't know. I don't know how many people it would affect then.
And, and there's more infrastructure on ours too.
Exactly. That's what we thought, if we could show on what they're proposing enough infrastructure that should
Yeah.
disqualified as wilderness, surely it would on all this other alternative that would include much more. I mean, there definitely too much stuff on that.
What is their, what is their case they argue for creating more wilderness areas? I mean, what do they, what do they expect to gain or what's the positive?
For a pristine experience is what Diane Prather mentioned at the meeting. But not anything that couldn't be experienced right now, the way it is. In fact, it would be better. Uh, the water's there.
Sure.
You're going to see wildlife out there.
Sure, yeah.
If that stuff goes away, everything else in a big fire hazard is going to approach us.
Yeah. Yeah, and then all the existing infrastructure just falls apart because you can't maintain it. And then it's just, everything, it just, yeah, it just, that's why I say, what's the positives in this? I mean, what are they, what are they? Anytime you, anytime you come up with a plan, if it's a wilderness plan, you would think they would be trying to implement a plan for a positive impact. But I don't see what kind of a positive impact this is going to bring. It just seems negative everywhere I look at it, you know? But.
They said they were required to find lands with wilderness characteristics. Is that right, Mr. Edie?
By federal law.
Correct. That's what they, they're based.
They're required to look.
Correct.
Not find.
Yeah, exactly. And that's what we were trying to present to them. You think you've found, but you have not really looked into it. Yes, ma'am.
Can I, can I ask you a question? Do you know if they made a proposal for these LWCs? Did it come from the environment or did they do it internally themselves, you know?
I think they did it internally.
The map that they're working from, their original first map was done, ordered on contract, that's what you got to cover. They didn't build that first map. That's why.
Probably.
All right, thank you.
These pieces are piling on, they gave them the right amount of acreage. That's right. They look for acreage, have to be five thousand acres.
Five thousand acres, correct.
And a lot of them are just five thousand acres.
Right.
Mr. Griffin, you said earlier that this is all based on.
Mr. Griffin, you said earlier that this is all based on control of land. From their standpoint, what they're seeing is, is, this is their positive for their standpoint of controlling the land.
There you go.
Could be a first step of that thirty by thirty deal coming into effect.
Exactly what it is.
All of us in this room is probably going to vote in 2022, but I guarantee everybody knows a bunch of people that aren't going to vote. We better get people to vote. Don't care who they vote for, the voter get out and vote. That's how you end this deal.
I know, I know. And we knew how much we had riding on the last election too, with all the redistricting and stuff and it's still, politics are important.
Well, if nobody else has anything, I'll call this meeting to adjourn. We do thank everybody for coming. Let's don't let it lie right here. Let's stay together and try to get the thing going. So again, thank you very much. Be careful going home.